And then I have to hold on a second.
You can hear me? Yeah, okay. Good evening.
All right.
Yes, yes. No, unfortunately Deb's dog had to be, has to be put down today. So she's very upset about that. Um, okay. I hereby call the zoning board of adjustment regular meeting to order for July 2nd, 2024 at 7:32 PM. Call to order and statement of compliance. Adequate notice of this meeting slash hearing has been provided by posting a copy of the public meeting slash hearing dates on the municipal bulletin board and website, by sending a copy to the Acro Sentinel and Courier newspapers, and by filing a copy with the municipal clerk. Standard board procedures. Any hearing conducted by the board is a quasi judicial proceeding. Any questions or comments must be limited to issues that are relevant to what the board may legally consider in reaching a decision, and decorum appropriate to judicial hearing must be maintained at all times. Electronic devices. All in attendance are asked to mute cell phones or any electronic devices as to not interrupt the proceedings. Excuse me. Pledge of allegiance, Tom, would you lead us, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We'll call.
Okay. Chairman Correct.
Here.
Vice Chairman Grosskopf.
Here.
Mr. Aronio.
Here.
Ms. Brennan.
Here.
Mr. Flatley is excused. Mr. Gianakis.
Here.
Uh, Mr. Rosenberg is excused. Uh, Mr. Watts.
Here.
And Ms. Crawford Collins.
Here.
All right. And may the record show that Liz is filling in for Deb and we have our, uh, glory, we have our engineer here also. So, uh, meeting minutes, they're gonna be, the, uh, approval of those are gonna be carried to 8:20. Now we have some resolutions. We have one, two, three, four, five resolutions, some of, all of which have different people that can vote on them. We have the first one, which is SF Holdings LLC, 837 Miles Road, Gillette, New Jersey, block 14001, lot 25, application number 2402Z. Has everybody had a chance to review the resolution? I know they were emailed out.
Yes.
Uh, any corrections, changes, comments on the resolution for that applicant?
None that I noticed.
Okay. And for the record, there is no public, so there's no comments coming from that area. Uh, okay, now for this one, I'm eligible, Vice Chairman Grochoff is eligible, Mr. Watson and Ms. Crawford are eligible, so, um...
Mr. Gianakis.
And Mr. Gianakis, I'm sorry, Mr. Gianakis is also eligible. So do I hear a motion to approve the SF Holdings LLC resolution?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. We'll call.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Gianakis.
Yes.
Mr. Watts.
Yeah.
Uh, Ms. Crawford Collins.
Yes.
Uh, Vice Chairman Grosskopf.
Yes.
And Chairman Correct.
Yes. Okay, one down. Now we have the CPM Associates LLC, AKA The Uncommon Thread, located at 331 Elm Street, Sterling, New Jersey, block 13006, lots 14 and 14.01, application number 24-03Z. Again, no one in the audience to comment. Does everyone who is eligible to vote, of which I am not, she accidentally put that I was, but I'm not, because I had to recuse myself from that one. It says here that I, that I was recused when it comes to the last page, but unfortunately she, uh, put in here that I could vote on this one. But anyway, um, everyone had a chance to look at this one? Any comments, corrections? Hearing none?
The only changes would be, Mr. Chairman, just to reflect that.
I'm not eligible.
Yeah, you were there.
Yes, yeah. I think it might have had the, on the vote thing, it did say that, said correct, no, none, recused, none. I guess that's the only way you could do that. So I am not eligible. All right, now we've got Vice Chairman, you've got Mr. Gianakis, Mr. Watson, Ms. Crawford Collins. Somebody want to make a motion?
I make a motion to approve.
Okay, second? Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, we'll call.
Okay, Mr. Gianakis.
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Watts.
Yes.
Ms. Crawford Collins.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Grosskopf.
Yes.
Okay, another one down. All right, the next one is Drone Ron LLC at 1893 Long Hill Road, Millington, New Jersey, block 12302, lot 11, application number 24-06Z. And...
You're not eligible.
Right, I am not eligible again. No audience on this one either. Do I hear any comments, corrections, or any other info, um, input on this one? Hearing none, do I hear a motion to approve?
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, we'll call, please.
Uh, Mr. Aronio.
Yes.
Ms. Brennan.
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Watts.
Yes.
Ms. Crawford Collins.
Yes.
Uh, and Vice Chairman Grosskopf.
Yes.
Okay, the next one is Steven Genick and Kathleen Cannon Genick, 1451 Forest Drive, Sterling, New Jersey, block 14206, lot 1, application number 24-07Z. And, uh, the eligible people on this is myself, Mr. Grosskopf, Mr. Gianakis, Mr. Watson, Ms. Crawford Collins. Uh, do I hear any, um, changes, corrections, or comments on this one? Hearing none, do I hear a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Okay, a second?
Second.
Okay, we'll call.
Uh, Mr. Gianakis.
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Watts.
Yes.
Ms. Crawford Collins.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Grosskopf.
Yes.
Chairman Correct.
Yes. Right, and the last one is the R Doggies Inc., 977 Valley Road, Gillette, New Jersey, block 10601, lot 8, application number 24-08Z. Again, I see no public for this one. Uh, the eligible people to vote on this is myself, Mr. Grochoff, Mr. Aronio, Mr. Gianakis, Mr. Watson, Ms. Crawford Collins. Do I hear mo, do I hear any comments or changes on this one?
One, uh...
Yes.
Type of graphical error, Mr. Chairman. First paragraph, third line down, uh, 977 Valley Road?
Oh, the Valley is...
Just gotta plug an E in there.
Okay.
That happened, but...
I think that's a minor correction.
Exactly, just one thing.
Uh, any other changes or comments?
Valley Road Sterling or Valley Road Gillette?
Uh, that's Gillette. It should be also Gillette there too. So it's Valley Road Gillette.
Okay.
So that's, that's, thank you, good catch. All right, that's why he's a real estate agent.
He knows where he is.
Yeah, most of the time. Um, do I hear a motion to approve this one?
I'll move it as amended.
Okay, and do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Okay. We'll call, please.
Okay, Mr. Aronio.
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Gianakis.
Yes.
Mr. Watts.
Yes.
Ms. Crawford Collins.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Grosskopf.
Yes.
Chairman Correct.
Yes. Nice. That takes care of the resolutions. Now I understand you have some new business or slash old business for us.
Yes. I guess you could consider it new and old business, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
So, edification of our board professionals. You guys were at the plant, the Long Hill, Long Hill Planning Board meeting last week, right? Well, it turns out that the Planning Board apparently never adopted bylaws, and the last time this board adopted bylaws, and this is to everybody, was in 2015.
Right.
So...
I remember that.
Being that that's the case, uh, the Planning Board, um, they're working on their own set of bylaws, but noticing that the board, this board hasn't adopted one in a very long time. Steve directed me to put a new, uh, set of bylaws together for y'all. So what, I sent you guys by email the other day, and listen, Joe, I'm sorry for not sending this to you guys, because I didn't think you were gonna be here, because we didn't have much on the agenda. I put, I kind of synthesized what was the 2015 bylaws with what my firm kind of uses as our template, set of bylaws that we basically provide to every board that we have. So, um, document I'm referring to right now, I don't know if you guys brought copies of it, but...
No.
Okay, okay. I would have, would have expected Deb to print them out, but she's not here, she's dealing with some stuff, so besides the point. Well, if nobody has it, it's hard for me to really refer to anything here, but what I'd sent you guys was just that, you know, like I explained, uh, you know, kind of a synthesis of your bylaws, your old bylaws plus our template. Um, it's relatively lengthy, you know, once I get past the, uh, the table of contents page from, it's like pages four to 24, it's almost 20 pages worth of, of content in here, so... Even if nobody has it in front of them, I guess we can really discuss it tonight, but if you guys want to take a look at it, we can come back and...
Yeah, do you have a clean, do you have an original version of an old one?
Yeah, the email I circulated to you guys the other day.
Had it in there?
Right, I had the original.
Okay.
Your, your 2015 set, our regular template set.
And the combined.
The combined, and then also a redlined version of the combined version, so you could kind of see where things got plugged in and changed.
Okay. Well, what I would suggest is that everybody has a chance, because it was a little bit of a last minute thing.
It was, yeah.
If everybody would please look at them for the next meeting that we can spend some time on them. Uh, I'm sure there's gonna be a meeting coming up that we're not gonna have so busy, hopefully. And if we could just, um, take the time to review them, if you want to print them out fine, if you don't, look them out on a computer, and, uh, be ready to discuss them at the next ti, at the next available date that we can do it. And hopefully, uh, we can, uh, adopt a comprehensive set of bylaws that are useful to us, that are actually, uh, official, that are legally useful, basically.
Exactly. And, Mr. Chairman, I'll just throw in there, I, when I was looking at the 2015 bylaws, I could, there was a resolution page included with that, and from what I could tell from this, just this resolution page, yourself and other members of the board at the time, Chairman Baer.
Right.
Uh, board member O'Mullen, who was apparently an attorney, you guys put a lot of work into this, so I tried, did my best to...
Yeah, there was, there were probably some areas of it that could have been improved, because, uh, Mike O'Mullen and myself sat down and tried to work these out, but, you know, uh, we would, it's so far back, I don't remember.
Yeah, it was almost a decade ago.
Yeah, I know. Uh, you know, it's one of those things where, you know, you put the best effort into it, but it's, you know, sometimes, everything can be improved, and things change, law changes too, so...
Well, there was actually a lot of stuff in that 2015 set that wasn't in our template.
Oh, good.
So if anything, it kind of helps us in a roundabout way.
Good, good.
We won't charge you.
No, I won't charge you, yeah. So, um, how does everybody feel? I know, did anybody have actually a chance to look at them?
I, I was away over the weekend, I didn't...
Okay.
See anything pertaining to tonight's meeting.
Yeah, that's what I figured, yeah.
Twenty minutes ago.
Right, I, I...
I did see it, and I do recall, 2015, Ed, you and I were both here.
Yes, I know.
And it was a little bit controversial at the time, as you remember, there was, this was done because there was some, I'd say, dissension among the board.
Yeah.
That's why we did it. We never had bylaws, and there was never a, any need for them. But this was done, there was, you know, there was different, and there still are, we're always gonna have, like, differences of opinion, but at the time it was more, I'd say, divided, and it was, you know, close. So I, I was a little bit hyper paranoid about some of the clauses in here, in particular the one for disqualification of board members, where another board member can disqualify whatever. I did a little research on that, talked to some, some planning attorneys, the one that taught the class, you know, our own, and that's the only thing that I had an issue with at the time. It went through anyway. Our own, our own board attorney thought that it wasn't necessary at the time, and thought that it could be used for political reasons. So in other words, if it's a, if it's a controversial application that's ongoing, which we had at the time, and it's, you know, it's a close decision, everybody kind of knows where other people stand on density development, all kinds of stuff like that, especially at the time, they were arguing over it. My problem with that was that you could single out an easy target and remove from the board, and, which is...
Well, just, in, in...
I just, I know, I know it's...
In deference to the board, that was never done.
It was never done.
Yeah.
No, but that was my hyper little paranoia maybe, I don't know, but like...
Well, let, let's look to see whether you kept it or left it out.
I remember.
You too.
From that, I still remember that.
Whatever was in that bylaw, so yeah.
So I just wanted to have you think about that, and let me, I want to know what your thoughts are, because I think that in, the second you do that, a board member that does that is now conflicted with either some of the board or at least another part of the board, so you actually created a conflict there, and now you're an interested party. Like, you now became part of what is an interested party.
Was a person, was a board member able to be removed by one other board member?
No, so the process is, is that the board will meet and, and hear the, and he, hear what's going on, right? Um, and, and really hold a, hold a case, like, have a hearing about that, that issue. Now, of course, if the board's going in one direction, you could say, well, that, we're gonna go that way anyway, but, you know, I'm saying, like, there could be, you know, fishing expeditions. And I don't like it, I don't love it. I don't know if I'm wrong, I could be way out there on my own with this one, but like I said, I've talked to some land use attorneys, and they're like, we never heard of that. You know, if you, if you are conflicted, you step down.
Right.
You know, and that's it. And we're all at large board members, and we all are responsible for ourselves. And, you know, I think the minute you have other board members telling other board members what to do, there's an issue, right?
What's the interpretation of that own board member, whether they're conflicted or not, and then the other people, because they're...
Well, normally, a board member, if he thinks he has a conflict, would discuss it with our attorney.
Go to the attorney.
And the attorney would, would, uh, give their legal opinion as to whether it does, uh, look like a, uh, an appearance of impropriety, and then, you know...
Even appearance, right, but not even an actual, just an appearance.
Yeah, just an appearance.
And you are on the side of caution, right, and you step down.
Yeah, so... It, it's a legal matter.
Right.
And normally, we defer to the attorney, because that's their job, that's what we paying the big bucks for.
I have, uh, for the edification of the board, I have that, that section of the, our prior bylaws. I call them prior, because I'm assuming we're starting with the...
What page?
Page five. And the disqualification of board members, and I'll read it briefly, that there's three bullet points there, where the board member owns a property within 200 feet of, of subs, of property.
Which is normal.
Right? Where a board member or a member of his or her immediate family has direct or indirect financial or personal involvement. Okay, we've got that one. And where the board member has any other personal or pecuniary involvement or interest that might reasonably be expected to impair the board member's objectivity.
Yeah, okay.
I, right. So, maybe this is watered down from what you originally saw, Jerry, but these don't, these don't seem, these don't seem too bad. Seems like we do that.
No, that is not the issue. That's normal, that's standard, that's in the land use manual, right? That's where we get that from. It's the process of, thank you, it's the process of another board member challenging you and saying, you know, Tom, I think you shouldn't be on this case. You say, well, I am not conflicted. Well, you know what, you're not gonna decide that, Tom, we are.
Right.
You know?
The board attorney should decide that, so...
Correct, that's what I believe.
If there's...
Well, that's, that was paragraph C. That's the, should a board member fail to disqualify himself or herself from a particularly matter on the basis of potential conflict of interest, as defined in one, that whatever, as, uh, any interested party or member of the board of adjustment may request that the board make a determination of the board member's qualification.
Or member of the board, because the minute a board member steps up, since they have a problem with Mrs. Jones, they're conflicted. They now too have to leave.
Why?
Because they just had a conflict with the, with the, with the board. Like, that's the board, the, the board's a body, right? So if you go against that body, now you have a conflict with them, like, you are on the other side of an issue.
No, 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 no. No, this means that if a, if a party in the audience thinks you have a conflict...
I understand that.
Well, one of the board members thinks that there may be...
Well, not a member of the audience, because now that's just the general public, I mean, it's only, it's only an interested party.
It says any, it says any interested party, well, usually the people that show up have some...
Not an interested party.
Well, it, usually, most people that show up are within the 200 feet.
Yes, it's different than a member of the public.
Well, I, all right, that's true. I meant the people that usually show up are interested.
I think what this does, Mr. Aronio, is it sets up a procedure, let's say you have an applicant that comes in, and they, you know, question whether one of the board members is gonna be impartial.
Right.
This gives them, this procedure...
I agree with you.
Essentially, yeah.
That's the interested party, is the applicant.
Right.
Right, that's the interested party. The board members are not interested parties, because if we were, we would be interested parties, we'd be conflicted, so we're, we should be disinterested.
But what if member A knows that member B lives across the street from...
Well, has a, let, let's say, that's, that's too simple. Let's say they know they have some financial interest, that maybe is not as evident.
Nobody else would know?
Yeah, that nobody else would know. Because, because living across the street, everybody would see that. But let's say that one member knows that another member has some financial interest in it, that he might think it's a conflict. But from what I read here, is if that's brought up, then you go into closed section, you get legal advice from the attorney, so it's not that easy to just kick someone off the board. I mean, all that person is doing, whether it's an interested party or, or a board member, they're just bringing the issue up.
If it's facts based, yes.
Yeah, then it's, then it's discussed by, with the attorney. And if the attorney ultimately says, no, there's no conflict, that's what stands. You know, so I don't think...
It's more, and it's more so, I'd say, when the board is debating on something that has to do with density or a pilot program, or something like that, where there's differences on the board, and it's close, they say, all we need is one more vote, and we can get that guy off, right? We can say, you're conflicted, and now you're gone, and now the vote changes.
Well, wait, see, you can't just say someone's conflicted, because according to even the bylaws we had, it has to go through a hearing.
I agree.
The attorney has to, uh, be advi, be consulted. So it's not just say, he has a, you know, she has a conflict, I want her off, that's not that simple. So what you're saying is really...
You're still calling out other board members.
Right, yeah, I understand that.
That's what I have the issue with. It's not, we don't have, we shouldn't be doing that to each other. We shouldn't be telling each other when to step down and when not to. We should all handle our own seats.
Okay, what do you think?
Sure, just to be fair, like, theoretically, you could run into a situation, and I'm not taking a side, I'm just trying to explain why.
Take a side, yeah.
Yeah.
I want your opinion.
Let's say you run into a situation where, you know, a board member does have a pretty obvious, or at least to some people, obvious conflict of interest, but he or she refuses to step down from the day, and says, screw you, I'm not going anywhere, I'm just, I'm here. You know, the idea is that there should be a process to have that person removed. Now, what particulars that would be, who's to say? We have to come to a, kind of, you know, something that everybody could agree upon, that's, that's legal. But, you know, I'm just trying to give you the devil's advocate explanation as to why you would want...
But again, in that case...
How about that process in our procedures? If a board member had a, had a conflict, if you said step down, if the rest of the board is not, if Mr. Land Use Law has a duty to release him, remove him from his opinion? Like, if, if, if the...
If I could help, there were no bylaws.
Legal opinion is that in closed session, that there appears to be a conflict, and it would be in the best interest of municipalities, would the potential of the lawsuit have gone on?
Right.
Without those bylaws, if the board had a mechanism to make sure that that person doesn't participate, does not...
I'm sure you could kind of like, put something together, so to speak, at that point in time.
That's what we did.
There's no clear path, so this is a clear path to make sure that in an abundance of caution, if everybody's in a disagreement, it goes to its own closed session.
It has a process, right.
Right, yeah, there's, I mean, if you read this, it's pretty extensive, we don't, one person cannot do it alone. One person just brings up the issue.
Without that, you, you have to create the framework.
Right, yeah.
There is no case law on it.
Exactly, you know, there's still entitled, as a board member, you're entitled to do process.
Yeah, see, Jerry, I don't view it as one member calling out another. I view it as one, somebody saying, I think there may be a conflict here, not against any, not being against a person, just saying, I think there's a conflict, so that way you err on the side of, of caution, so that if the board, if the applicant is approved or disapproved, they don't have an appeal issue. So then the board discusses it, and if the app, if the person who, who may, may or may not have the conflict doesn't see it, they have the right to be heard, and, and their opinion matters, and if the whole, if the attorney feels, no, there isn't a conflict, that stands, and then we vote. So I don't think, I, I don't think this can be used like you say it can be used.
Can I make a suggestion, because I don't think that we're gonna come to a resolution on this today? Could we ask the board attorney to...
Research it.
Research it and come to us with a recommendation as to what other towns do and how that compares to what we currently have, and to the extent that there is anything in the municipal land use law that would be helpful.
Or case law for no matter, yeah.
Yeah, that's great, thank you.
Yeah, no, no, I, I was gonna have him do that anyway, but I was, I was just explaining it, I don't think this is harsh.
I'm only bringing this up because at the time that was going on, there was, like I said, the board was arguing, there was one person that wanted this.
Yeah.
One person, I don't remember, and I'm not gonna say names.
I don't either.
Pushed this through. Pushed this, like, really wanted this bad, like, and was rabid about it, and I was thinking, it's not, it's not, we don't need it, like, we don't have to have this, and that was, that was 90% of the reason that drove us to have bylaws.
Okay.
We didn't have bylaws prior to that.
No, I understand that.
They wanted the ability to move, remove someone, if they had to.
Well, I understand what you're saying, but I don't think that gives any one person the ability to do anything.
In fact, it takes five.
It takes, it takes five people.
I agree with that.
Yeah, so you...
To me, it was a little dangerous, that's all.
No, I, yeah, I don't think it's as dangerous as you think it is.
Your problem, right.
But we'll find out.
It's, it's not the smoking gun, that...
Right, no, and I'm not saying that it is, I'm just saying that it's the, of all that was done, and you worked hard on that, I know you did.
Yeah.
And I know, uh, Tom did too.
And, and, and Mike O'Mullen.
Mike O'Mullen, right. And, and Tom Baer did a lot of work on that as well.
Yes, yes.
Essentially deciding someone's refusal from the application for them, not dismissal from the board.
Yeah.
No, just the application. Right, yeah, exactly. It's just a mere...
If it said of an interested party challenges that, totally fine with that. Like, if the applicant says, you know, this guy shouldn't be up there, he's, he's conflicted on this.
So they, what you're doing, you're, you're just exceptioning that it's a fellow board member, you don't mind if the applicant are there. Oh, okay, that...
Hundred percent.
I'm glad you explained that, I wasn't quite sure what you, I...
In my view, I could be totally wrong, but in my view, the minute that the board member does that, they have sided with something to do with the case.
I don't think they've sided with, see, that's where I don't see that. I don't think they've sided with anybody, I think they're just protecting the integrity of the decision, be, thinking that if a decision is made with a potential conflict person sitting, it could potentially jeopardize whatever the decision is.
And they would have to continue, to convince four other sitting board members.
Right, right, which is not easy to do if you're wrong, so. Now, this is, this is the...
That's the, um, redlined version, so that's...
Why is this one so thin?
This is the original. This is the one, when I, this one...
No, this is the 2015.
Okay, this is the 2015.
Right.
This is my firm's, like, template set.
Oh, this is your firm's template.
I use that as a springboard to put...
And this is the two combined.